All of the commissioners are here, so therefore we have a quorum. And I would like to ask the town council person Evelyn Bryant Ward to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Evelyn, are you able to do that? John Mudd, could I ask you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for that, sir. Today is the 80th anniversary of the attack on Pearl Harbor. I'd like for us to take the moment of silence in memory of all of those who were lost during that time period and in gratefulness to the people who aim to keep us free. About Gregory, anything, any words of wisdom to share before we get started?
Mike, you may want to start over. For a limited time, we lost you. We didn't hear anything.
Oh, really? Let me change my hearing device. Hold on a minute.
We can hear you now, but for the better part of your message, we didn't hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna change my device. Hold on a minute.
Chairman Gann, if you were speaking, you are on mute.
Can everybody hear me now?
Now I can.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I can hear you and you can hear me. Good. Okay, so I was asking if Dawn Banks would say a few words. We welcome her to the board. Dawn, are you available to speak?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I just wanted to say good evening to everyone. I am delighted and excited about this opportunity and I'm looking forward to working with each of you and making La Plata a better place.
About Gregory Sampson, any words of wisdom from you?
I would just second Dawn's comments. I'm very excited about this opportunity and look forward to working with everybody and I thank everyone for this opportunity.
Okay, well, thank you to both of you. Welcome aboard. And Janine or Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong. It's my understanding that all of the members, including Dawn, are regular members and Greg is an alternate. Do I have that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So Gregory, that doesn't mean that you get to sit back and not do anything. We would hope that you would participate in this meeting just as fully as any other commission member, but since we have all of the commissioners here when it comes to a vote, unless a member recuses him or herself, you will not be asked to participate in the vote. Having said that, let's get started. Someone has something to say? Approval of minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to take a look at the minutes? Are there any proposed changes?
Chairman Gann, did you want to do the pledge of allegiance?
We did do that.
You did?
Yes, John Mudd led that for us. We also had a moment of silence.
I'm sorry, I did not hear you. That was, I guess that's when you were, I couldn't hear you. Thank you.
Okay, so we now have that corrected. But we did do the pledge of allegiance and we had a moment of silence when you wouldn't hear me, so.
Wow, okay. So with the review of the minutes, I did note a couple of corrections in paragraph 3.2A where it noted, where it's noted that I abstained, recused myself from the conversation. If we could just note on the roll call that I abstained from the vote.
Okay, Janine Harrington, have you heard that?
Yes, yes, I will make sure that we make that change.
And then my second comment would be, since Danielle nor Craig were present for that meeting, would it be submitted by, I'm not sure if Kelly was present, but I don't think that they should, their names should be on meeting minutes that they can't, you know, really attest to.
Danielle was not at the meeting, Kelly was, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, I was referencing Craig Howard. His name is on the meeting minutes and he wasn't present, I don't think. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
I think you're correct.
Well, I believe I was there. I took the notes and can provide if you need them.
Oh, well, we didn't know that, Craig.
Excellent, Craig.
Okay.
Excellent. You still spoke Danielle's name.
That can be corrected.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Craig, are you taking the notes tonight?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
Those were all the corrections that I had, Chairman Gann.
Any other comments from the commissioners on the minutes? Not hearing any, any, could I hear a motion for, I guess, approval of amended minutes?
Chairman Gann, I move that we accept the minutes with, minutes with the noted corrections.
Is there a second?
John Mudd, I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion properly made and seconded. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Is there anyone opposed to approving of the amended minutes? Okay, the motion passes. The approved amended minutes are approved.
Chairman Gann, you didn't take a vote on the minutes. You only asked for anyone that would not approve them. You didn't take a vote.
Thank you for that.
All in favor?
All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Minutes as amended have been approved. Okay, matters of discussion tonight. First item on the agenda is 109 Charles Street. And I move to Janine Harrington for a staff report.
All right, good evening. Hope we have a question.
Yes, so normally, I'm sorry to interrupt, Janine, I don't see it on the screen as like you're sharing the screen. Is there, is it on my end or is it overall?
We see the minutes on the screen.
You do?
Yes.
I see the agenda.
Yeah, that's what I... I'm sorry, Craig, I see the agenda on the screen. Thank you very much.
I don't see anything. Okay, maybe it's just me, I don't know.
It might be the view that you're in. I think there's up towards the top, there's three little dots that you can open up some options. I know for me, I have gallery at the top and it allows me to see the agenda.
So those three dots are at the bottom and it only has minimized content and focus on content.
Hmm.
And when I click at the top, I don't see anything. I'm gonna log out and then log back in, maybe that'll correct it. Is that okay?
Okay, thank you. See you soon.
All righty.
Well, we maintain quorum during that brief absence. And Janine, or your...
Okay, and good evening, planning commission members. Just so you're aware, I will be leaving my video off. I'm a little under the weather and not very presentable this evening, so I'm just going to leave my microphone on. So for the first agenda item, it is for 109 Charles Street. It's for a major site plan approval. We have the owner applicant, Rob Brook, with CMI Associates, and the engineer was Ben Dyer Associates with James Erdman. This site is located on the eastbound side of Charles Street, just east of the intersection of Howard Street and Charles Street. The zoning is central business in the downtown. It is currently a vacant parcel with just a parking lot on it at the moment. It is approximately 1.53 acres. To the north, you have central business. To the south is also central business, as well as the, to the east and west is all central business in the downtown core. So for a little background, the applicant submitted their application for a major site plan on October 18th for the review and approval of a new multifamily development containing 37 apartment units. On March 29th of 2021, they had gone, submitted a design review board application for architectural design review, and that application was subsequently approved as presented on July 9th of 2021. The proposed development has two three-story buildings that front along Charles Street, also known as Route 6, with parking to the rear of the building. The project has proposed all of the mechanical equipment on the roof to avoid visual clutter on the... This will serve as infill development on an existing vacant parcel in the downtown. The main entrance to the site will be located off of Howard Street, which will be dedicated to the town at a future dedication. There are three intersections that can be utilized by residents at Howard Street, at St. Mary's Avenue, Howard Street at Charles Street, and an existing ingress egress through the parcel just west of the site onto Crane Highway or Route 301. Due to the proximity to the downtown, there are also sidewalks that will lead Charles Street and through Howard Street for pedestrian access. The project is utilizing a shared parking agreement with the Baldes Office Center and Baldes Retail Center, and parking tabulations have been provided to show that adequate parking is available for all existing uses through their shared use table. Getting into criteria, criteria for approval and findings, under chapter 108-43 Forest Conservation exemptions, this project is exempt from the forest conservation requirements under chapter 108, since they will not be disturbing more than 20,000 square feet of forest area. Chapter 167 Stormwater Management, the Stormwater Management Site Development Plan Step 2 have been approved in compliance with this section. Water quality treatment through the use of microbioretention facilities and existing stormwater quality management pond and pervious pavement have been provided for greater than 100% of the total impervious area within the limits of disturbance. Additionally, post-development flows are either equal to or less than the pre-development condition, and the applicant will be submitting their final site development plan or step three for review and approval. Under chapter 173-9 Streets, across, as I mentioned before, the site will utilize an access point onto Howard Street. They've designed the parking lot to provide adequate circulation throughout the site and proposed five-foot sidewalks on-site will connect to the overall sidewalk network, allowing for pedestrian activity to all the future development and through the downtown. Ramps have also been provided at crosswalks to ensure that the sidewalks are in compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act, and as part of the development, Howard Street will be dedicated to the town. Under chapter 186 Waters and Sewers, all water and sewer connections are being provided in compliance with this section, and there is currently water and sewer capacity estimated for this project. Under the zoning regulations, chapter 191-30, for a multifamily dwelling unit, the applicant has provided an analysis on their plans, showing that the site is in compliance with the dimensional requirements. They have 10-foot front setback along Charles Street, no side setbacks, and a rear setback of 20 feet. The maximum height will be set at 50 feet and each building is being evaluated for compliance. For lighting standards, under section 191-41, the applicant has provided parking lot lighting in accordance with this section, also shown on sheet 18 of the major site plan. Proposed lighting will not exceed 10-foot candles and will adequately illuminate the site during the evening hours. The site is surrounded by similar uses and the lighting should not negatively affect the adjoining property owners. All the lighting is aimed down and shall not flicker in accordance with this section. The provided lighting design does provide a minimum of one foot candle throughout the entire parking lot of the parcel. The parking lot lights that are being proposed are 20 feet tall, will be approximately 146-watt LED bulbs, and there are four proposed wall lights and six total pole-mounted lights on the site. For their parking requirements, they have several different uses that they're showing as part of their shared use table. We have the proposed dwelling unit multifamily, existing office, medical office, dance studio, restaurant, restaurant, fast food. So total parking required is 256.8. They are providing 206 parking spaces overall with 13 ADA parking spaces. Required loading is six parking spaces and they are providing four parking, or four loading spaces. Parking requirements have not been met on the site, however, the applicant is subject to an existing shared parking agreement in accordance with the town code. Ben Dyer Associates performed, performed a shared parking tabulation on sheet two of the site plan. Each use has been evaluated for the parking need during weekday and weekend time periods, indicating that the maximum number of parking spaces needed to accommodate all uses is 205. Therefore, it has been determined that the proposed 206 parking spaces will meet the immediate need of the project. Staff would recommend approval of the shared parking agreement. The parking spaces will be the standard 9 by 18 and the ADA parking spaces will be the standard 8 by 18 with the appropriate access aisles as shown on the plans. Under section 191-45 landscaping, the interior parking lot landscaping has been met on-site. The code required a landscape area equivalent to 5% of the site area, and the applicant is providing approximately 28.5% or 22,651 square feet. The applicant has provided native vegetation throughout the site, including native trees, shrubs, and perennials, and the parking, perimeter parking landscaping requirement has been met in accordance with this section as well. Under the comprehensive plan 2020, we do find that the site is in performance with the land use element, which labels the site as commercial, and the maximum street furniture has been achieved with this project. Under transportation goals, the site has proposed five-foot sidewalks on-site that will eventually connect to the overall network of the downtown and onto Charles Street, providing that walkable community that we're looking for. And under goal number 17, better manage the supply of existing parking and limit new off-street parking, as noted that they are utilizing the shared parking agreement, and this will help to utilize the existing parking in the area and not create additional parking that may not be needed. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the major site plan and shared parking agreement in accordance with section 191-11 of the town code and with the 2020 comprehensive plan. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have of me, or we do have the applicant on the call if you have any questions of them.
Are there any questions from the commissioners of Director Harrington?
Mike, John Mudd, just had a couple of clarifications for Janine. During your presentation, you read from a table that you have in your staff report demonstrating the shared parking. And today I took a calculator and just added up those totals, and unfortunately, the totals that are being portrayed are not the actual mathematical sums of those two columns. So I'm confused just what the actual numbers are. They seem to be the same numbers that were provided by the engineer in their analysis, but yet doing simple mathematics, they don't seem to add up, and I guess that's my initial question.
I definitely did not fix the required loading or provide, provided loading on my tabulation.
Uh huh.
So that one is definitely incorrect.
Well, whenever I add up the column under required, I get 194 spaces and your table or their table shows 256. When you add up the listed provided, it comes up with 243 spaces, not 206. So again, unless there's numbers that aren't being shown, I'm confused just how many spaces correspond to which uses.
Could a representative from the applicant address this question?
Yes, this is James Erdman at Ben Dyer Associates. I guess to simply answer the question as to what we have provided, on sheet two of our plan set, and I've got it enlarged now, so forgive me while I, while I try to zoom around the plan. But we do have on our sheet, our table of required parking and proposed parking, and we do have, what we've determined is that if you were to look at each use individually, that there would be a requirement of 256.8 spaces. However, when we use the shared parking based on hours and distribution, that there is 204.8 spaces required in that. And so, and we provided the required amount based on that parking tabulation.
Yeah, I mean, I want to believe you for sure, but if you take a calculator and add up the numbers, they don't match the numbers that are portrayed in the staff report or on sheet one of your site plan. So again, I appreciate if you can clarify that. Not trying to be hard-nosed here, but if we're being asked to approve the shared parking arrangement, I think we have to do it based on actual numbers. And right now, it's just a mass of confusion based on what I've reviewed.
Okay, and if you are in fact basing it off of the, what you graphically state on page, it will not show you all of the parking because the page one shows the parking that is at the rear of the, of the Baldes Retail and just a portion of the Baldes office building. If you look at our plan, it does not show all the way out to US Route 301.
No, I understand that, but you know, if there's a footnote that said these don't include the total parking currently at the retail center, then maybe it would make more sense.
Well, it do include the, the parking at the retail center. If I, if I understand correctly.
John, if I could ask for clarification, are, are you referring to a table and the numbers don't add up? Or are, do you count the spots and say that doesn't agree with the table?
No, I'm simply looked at the table in our staff report that Janine read from a little while ago, and I added up the numbers in the columns and they, they don't add up to the numbers that are being shown. There's vast differences. So I'm confused, is the mathematics wrong? Is, you know, I'm just not, it's not clear to me.
Let me pull up my...
It sounds like you're referring to only Janine's staff report, not the drawing or drawings presented by the applicant. Is that correct?
I remember looking at the site plan and seeing the very same required, provided numbers listed on one, one of the sheets. But, but again, as a planning commission, we're obviously following the staff report presented by staff as an accurate and recommended approval item. And honestly, at this point, it's, it's just more confusing than anything for me to be able to, um, they catch your tail of it. Bottom line is, you're still going to be short, and I guess the other question is if, if this original site was established as an overflow parking facility as part of a prior shared agreement, and now today we're being asked to approve apartments on this very parcel, it feels like we're continuing to drop down the hole as far as the availability of sufficient parking. So that's my general feel for the whole thing. You know, I don't know where you replace the parking that sits there today, and in fact, now you're adding additional demand for more parking. So I'm all for reasonable and realistic shared parking agreements, you know, where you would have a church next door to, you know, retail building and there could be a lot of shared type of scenarios under those circumstances. But again, not trying to be difficult, I'm just reading the information we're provided, and it doesn't add up. So that's where I am right now.
So that was an error on my part. I do apologize.
Again, I'm not trying to make anybody look bad or cast negativity here by any means, but these are important numbers for this board to consider tonight as it relates to the site plan, that's all.
So Janine, to address Mr. Mudd's question, what would the numbers actually be?
That's what I'm trying to verify very quickly here.
Okay, while you're doing that, I see two hands raised. Councilman Evelyn Bryant Ward, do you have a question?
Thank you, Chairman Gann, yes, and my question did pertain to the numbers as well. But then, thinking about the location of this proposed site, the entrances and exits of all of those, maybe with the exception of St. Mary's Avenue, that's going to be very challenging coming off of Howard Street onto three, onto Route 6, and then also leaving the parking lot, getting onto 301. Has there been a study to address, you know, what the impact will be for individuals trying to get, you know, enter and exit from those different highways?
This is James Erdman, once again, with Ben Dyer Associates. No, because all of our access points are in fact existing.
Yes.
We didn't have any need in our minds to do any kind of a study because whether it was for apartments or redevelopment for a commercial, yeah, one time this, before the tornado, this was a, a commercial development, all of that circulation exists. So there's, we're not introducing anything new to the circulation pattern that doesn't already exist.
I understand, but you're, you're adding more volume to that particular area, and I don't know if you've ever seen it in the AM or around 4:00 PM, how busy and heavy it is to get onto, to, you know, exit out of, off of Howard Street or even turn onto Howard Street if that needs, you know, if there's a need for that. The traffic backs up to 301. So just a, just a question, just a concern, and I do understand that it already exists, but the volumes of traffic do not. So that would just be my concern. Thank you.
Okay. Very well.
Mr. Sampson, you have a question?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I actually had three questions, but they all relate or piggyback to Councilwoman Evelyn Bryan and Commissioner Mudd here. So the first one, to go with the last one first, Ms. Bryant, when you're talking about the volume on that road, I know you said no analysis was done for traffic or anything. Was anything looked at pertaining to the rescue squad going westbound of Route 6 because of that tight, compact area as far as safety concerns, under transportation, traffic? That's the, the first thing. And then the second thing, I won't even ask one question because I think Mr. Mudd covered it, but the second question I had... it, but the second question I have is where Howard and St. Mary's turns into Howard coming off of Charles. When you say the sidewalk will extend out that curvature from Howard, from Howard coming from St. Mary's and from Howard coming from Charles, will that be widening? And is that widened? And is that where you're talking about the sidewalks will be?
Once again, James Erdman with Ben Dyer Associates, if you're reviewing the site plan and I know it's not, I'm sorry, I'm also doing my math as, as I'm doing this and thus far I haven't seen any math errors.
Not on yours, James, there is on, on mine. If you look at my staff report, I did not do the correct number of parking spaces for the Baldes office building. That should be 82.3. And then, I think everything else is good, but yeah, the office, you should be 82.3. And when you add all of those up with that corrected number, it does come out to the So that was my error.
Right. So, so individually, you know, there is 256.8, but the idea of, you know, what we are proposing here, this off-peak shared parking table, so it's not shared, it's not just shared because there happens to be a church and this, it is also the daily use when you take a look at the different hours of the day, when people are in the office, but they're not in the, in the apartments, vice versa. So, so in that vein, using that, and, and this is quite frankly, and John, I think you would appreciate, this is actually taken from the same as the Charles County zoning ordinance. So as we compute, there is, we do in fact have enough parking.
The possibility that at the end of the day, all the residents of that apartment may not be parked on site, a certain percentage may have to park in the retail center, is that correct?
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Yeah, no, that wasn't, yes, I'm sorry, that was your question. No, we recognize that in the area behind, I apologize, I didn't understand that was the question. Yes, the area behind the retail, the Baldes retail, that parking lot on the, on the top there, that is expected to be the overflow parking for the, the visitors and things like that. What the owner has, has done is he is committing to make sure, and this is for his own marketing reasons, that every resident will have a parking space on, on the apartment property. But yes, in total, once again, because it is, it is the aggregate of all of it, yes, there is an expectation, if you're going to be that visitor, you're not going to be parking up where the residents park. You will be parking behind the, the retail building.
Right. All right. Well, and again, not trying to overplay the importance of parking spaces, but we continue to live in an automobile-based society that grows every day. The number of individual couples and families that have multiple vehicles, my daughter lived next door to a couple, to a man and a wife who they owned three cars. They had a beater day, everyday car, the wife's car, and then the fancy car. And so here's an example of two, two people in a one-bedroom town home with three cars. So my point is, we're not going in the wrong direction in the sense that we need to recognize that people have a lot of cars and we need to have commensurate parking to accommodate their needs essentially.
And I do appreciate that, you know, having said that, there is a vision and that vision is that we are introducing into an urban area, the ability to have the residential component so that we get that all-time use out of our, our area. It's rather than, than the Charles Street closed down at night and we can introduce activity, all the better in our opinion. So, so yes, there may be certain residents, and I'm sure it's going to be limited by, by the, the, the marketing of the apartments, that at certain times of the day, or excuse me, there's going to be certain persons that just won't, won't get apartments there because they happen to have, you know, a collector car or something, and there's no room to park it. It's a certain kind of person is going to be, have to be able to live there. It's not a, quite frankly, it's probably not families. It's, it's young families, but not families with multiple children and things like, like that that would be living in these apartments. So anyway, point being as it relates to that, based on the analyses that we did, and I say, I thank you for the, the, the request that you made as far as, yes, there will be parking for the apartments elsewhere beyond, on the apartment lot.
Okay. All right. I appreciate that clarification. And again, not, not to filibuster this discussion tonight, but I wanted to talk about Evelyn's prior comments about not having done a study in terms of the potential impact. And I'm sure Janine would correct me if I'm wrong, but the town presently does not have an adequate public facilities ordinance, which would usually dictate that this type of project would need to do a traffic study. If this project was being developed elsewhere in Charles County, it would require a, an analysis of its impact on intersections and roadways. So we're not at that stage yet for the town, but it's a very valid concern and comment you have in terms of the increased potential volumes on Route six.
And, and once again, I do appreciate that. The only point that I would like to make as, as opposed to a new site, this is a site that was, was used as a commercial establishment and regrettably because of the tornado, it, yes, it has sat vacant for a while, but it is not a, a forever vacant site. And I guess the expectation on my part, at least for the growth of the town, is that this site would in fact be developed. So I don't believe that we're introducing more traffic than what would have been expected for someone to redevelop a site that was, was taken out by the tornado. You know, that is, that is my thought.
James, would you like to speak up if I can? Commissioner Gann?
Yes, sir, Mr. Bro.
So my name is Robert Brooke. I'm with CMI General Contractors. I represent the applicant and we are the design build contractor for the project. So I think there's a couple of points I'd like to add to the conversation with regards to parking. James, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we followed the, the ordinance with regards to shared parking in our analysis. We've also allowed for two parking spaces per unit on site, I believe. And, you know, the other point that I'd like to make with regards to the shared parking of what I'm going to call the Baldes commercial area, including our residential project, is that the, the parking lot there is rarely full, fully occupied. And you're going to have during the, the, the working hours of the day, most of your residents at the apartment project are not going to be at the apartment. So you have, you know, you have overflow there for the commercial businesses below the residential project along 301. And conversely, in the evenings, when those commercial establishments are, are closed, you then have additional overflow parking for your residential project, which is the whole kind of purpose of the shared parking agreement. So, you know, part of, part of the analysis and looking at a development project like this, it obviously needs to be parked adequately or, you know, the applicant's going to, you know, have a hard time, you know, attracting tenants. And I feel based on our analysis and, and work with Ben Dyer over the last several months, that we've adequately addressed the parking needs for this project in, in kind of the area in general. The other point I wanted to make, I believe one of the commission members questioned the rescue squad as far as access and how this project would impact that. If I'm not mistaken, I believe the rescue squad has a signalized access east of our site, which would be the primary ingress and egress for the rescue squad. And it would give them the ability to stop traffic to get out in emergencies due to that signal. So just wanted to, yes, sir?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm the individual that asked about the rescue squad?
Yes, sir.
And since you were addressing it, I just wanted to be clear. Eastbound, what you're talking about, the rescue squad has easy access to Route six and it's a, and it's signalized like you said. But if they have to go westbound, they lose seconds to minutes because of the road configuration. And so I was concerned about them going west of Route six. And is it any analysis being, been done on the impact of that? That's specifically what I was concerned about.
Sure. And, and it was my understanding that that access, that signalized access point was used for both east and westbound directions when they left the rescue squad. So that is their main ingress and egress from their, from their facility. So that, I mean, that's my understanding of how they operate. I could be wrong, but I believe that's the purpose of the signal at Route six, at Charles Street. It's for both directions.
Dawn, you had a question? Do you still have it?
So I actually was going to pull the thread a little bit further on Mr. Erdman's comment about the certain type of, of family that would likely live in the apartments. And I was just curious about, are we looking at affordable housing, making the, the, the property attractive and affordable for a diverse and inclusive set of folks?
I'm going to defer that to Robert, who's, who's been.
So it goes without saying that, you know, we are, we are targeting a diverse group as, as our county is, is, is a diverse county. It is, it's going to be market rate apartments. It's going to be, you know, in line with the, the apartments that we have throughout the town and the county as a whole. So these are, you know, very nice amended, you know, nice, nice features in, in the units. You know, we have a, we have a very nice architectural design, which went through the design review board with unanimous approval. We believe, believe we're adding to the sense of place that the town already has with, with a, with a project that will attract a diverse group of tenants.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward, do you, do you have a question?
Yeah, just one last comment to Mr. Erdman. I understand about the, you know, the space having been occupied prior to the tornadoes, but those, both tornadoes happened several years ago and we've experienced much growth since that time. And my only concern is the, the distance between 301 and that flashing light for the emergency vehicle and the next stoplight at Washington Avenue, that traffic backs up. If you've ever in the morning, when those individuals would be leaving for work, we were making the assumption that they would be leaving for work, and when they will be returning, that's going to have a significant impact on traffic because they're all going in that same direction. Just a thought and a concern, you know, again, I know that we're not there yet, but the, what happened, you know, prior to the tornado, we didn't have the amount of growth in residents in the, the town that we have now. And so I, I would like for you guys to at least take that into consideration, you know, as you move forward.
Commissioner Sampson, you have another question?
Yes, I just wanted to get clarification on the previous question that I was asking, and I think Mr. Broke could probably answer it. And so to be as clear as possible, at the rear of the lot, if you're coming from the intersection of St. Mary's and Howard, and you're going towards the Baldes Center, there's a curvature back there where the road narrows. So I just wanted to make sure that I understood that road, which is now narrow, based on your site plan, the way I read it, would be widened and sidewalks will be put back there. So that would be one continuous city street in the main corridor instead of being a, a more narrowed curvature in the back. Is that correct?
So, so we're somewhat limited back there based on adjoining parcels and property lines, but what we, what we did to take that into account is we increased the radiuses and widened the entrance into the apartment project, which gives you a little bit more flexibility as you navigate that, that section of Howard Street. And yes, there's also a sidewalk that runs from that entrance, from that entrance down along Howard Street and out towards Charles Street. And I also believe, James, if I'm not mistaken, we've connected to the sidewalk headed towards St. Mary's Avenue. Is that correct?
Correct. And the other thing I would like to point out is, it may be a surprise to several of you that that part of what we call Howard Street, that really is on our property and, and is bisected between our proposed project and the REIT, and the, the Baldes office building, that is not a, that is not a town road. It is actually by virtue of this plan that the, the proposal is to, upon its approval, to dedicate that to the town for Howard Street, which they have been most, have wanted for several years now. So, so I, I guess I just do point out to you that technically Howard Street ends right at this property. It does not go through the property. But the intent is for that to, to be dedicated. Whoever has their, that hand moving along the pictures kind of showing that.
Okay, I'd like to bring up a different type of question here. Let me look at my notes to make sure I get this correct. I was on the commission at the time the Baldes retail property was put together and there was a lot of discussion at the time about the overflow parking lot and how people would park their car and then walk from their car to the Baldes retail property. And the result of that discussion was the installation of the, the wooden stairway that is currently on that hill. Janine, you might remind me when that meeting occurred. I think we had a condition in there that after some number of years, that if there weren't any changes, those steps would be, have to become permanent. So is that something that should be introduced into this particular plan? Seek your advice.
This is James Erdman, it actually is. If you look at the, the top part of the plan, close to the building, I don't know if that drawing can be pulled down, you'll see that those are the steps right there. And, and there's another point, as I would like to, to, you know, since we're talking about site, if we could, it's very interesting that you're talking about circulation and, and what is very nice is exactly what's happening there. We actually have a, a front door corridor that comes between the two buildings that puts a front face onto Charles Street so that you come through there, you can come through across the, you know, if you were one of the residents, you would walk out that way, or you could then come and come down the steps and get over to the, the sidewalk, and then you could cross and come into the Baldes retail and Baldes office buildings. So actually, we're, we're quite proud of the way that we've, we've looked at pedestrian circulation through this. But to answer your direct question, yes, it was understood that that had to be replaced, and it's in fact incorporated in our design.
Okay, I need to be more clear there. It seems to me that the current set of steps are further south on your drawing than you pointed to. What you pointed to when you were just saying your piece is right where your cursor is now, that appears to me to be a new set of steps. Is that true?
That's correct. That would replace the steps that are wooden.
Oh, okay, okay. Now I understand what you're saying. The second question that I had was if I read the presentation correctly, there is an existing stormwater management facility on the south end of the property at the curvature of Howard Street. When I look at the proposed plan, that's not obvious that it's still there, but it sounded like we were taking advantage of that. Can you help me understand the storm water management?
Yeah, we have analyzed this entire site anew. We, of course, take into consideration that there is impervious areas on the sites and already. But under our newest guidelines and criteria, which is referred to as environmental site design, not only are we providing the required environmental site design, which is what we consider quality stormwater management, but we are also doing some quantity management as well. Because what drains this site is that existing corn drain that runs from above us that drains all of that existing, the rescue squad, et cetera. It actually comes through our site. So what we've done is, in addition to the quality management that we're obligated to do, we're also addressing some quantity management prior to its release into that existing storm drain system. So yes, there was some small amount of stormwater management, but we've addressed it all anew.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the commissioners for either Director Harrington or the applicant? Okay, so then could I ask for a commissioner to make a recommendation of motion? What the staff is recommending is approval of the major site plan and the shared parking agreement.
Chairman Gahan?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve the major site plan and shared parking as presented.
The motion, is there a second? I will second that motion. Is there further discussion? No further discussion. I'd like to go to a vote. Commissioner Banks, yea or nay?
Yea.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward, yea or nay?
Yea.
Commissioner Johnson, yea or nay?
Nay.
Commissioner Mudd, yea or nay?
Yea.
And then I vote yea. So if I heard that correctly, it's four to one? The yays have it. Mr. Howard, did I hear those votes correctly?
You did, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Broke and Mr. Erdman and team, thank you very much for your participation this evening.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, the next item...
I'm sorry, this is Randall Williams. I'm the developer for the project. And I just wanted to say thank you very much. And Ms. Tracy, I'm sorry, I can't see your last name on Zoom. I know you're Renee, but I promise you this development will be very, very nice, and you will be very happy to have this in with you later. We're going to do a fantastic job for you. I just want to tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is the Rosewick Corner Apartments. Go to Director Harrington for the staff report.
All right, thank you, Chairman. So for the Rosewick Corner Apartments, this is actually a revision to the previous major site plan that we saw earlier for Major Site Plan 000439-2020. The applicant owner is Rick Bailey with Generation Properties LLC, and the engineer is Nicholas Beach with Bowler Engineering. So the site is located on the northbound side of Crane Highway, where Rosewick Road and Crane Highway meet perpendicular to the existing Rosewick Crossing Shopping Center. The existing zoning is Commercial Highway. It is currently vacant, and the size is approximately 18 acres. To the north is Commercial Highway. And I don't think I have this right. Apparently, I just did not do a very good job with my staff reports. I'm very sorry.
Hang in there, Janine.
I'm hanging. I'm so sorry. We've got so much going on, and I am dropping the ball. My apologies. So to the north, you have Commercial Highway, which is the existing Rosewick Shopping Center. To the west is Charles County. To the south is Commercial Highway, which is a newly annexed-in property, 5780 Crane Highway. And to the east, you also have Commercial Highway, which is existing, there's an existing residential home, but it is zoned Commercial Highway. So the applicant submitted an application for their major site plan on August 11th of 2020 for the review and approval of a new shopping center. On December 9th, the applicant submitted an application to the Design Review Board for the approval of a grocery store pad site, which is Aldi's. The application was subsequently approved as presented. On February 2nd, 2021, the Planning Commission approved the original major site plan for the shopping center. And as previously noted, the development was a commercial center with a grocery store, 7,000 square feet of retail space, a gas station, family daycare center, 40,000 square feet of office space, a bank, and a fast food restaurant. Now getting into the proposed development. The proposed development will now be mixed use with the Aldi grocery store, 7,000 square feet of retail space, a gas station, fast food restaurant, and 193 multifamily apartments as proposed. They did remove the family daycare center and 40,000 square feet of office and bank from the proposal. The main entrance to the site is located off of Rosewick Road at a signalized intersection across from the existing Rosewick Shopping Center. The applicant is also proposing an interparcel connection at the southern property line through 5780 Crane Highway, which has just recently finalized its annexation petition, as I found out. The site is proposed to be developed in phases for each pad site. The first anchor site is the Aldi grocery store located on the southwest corner of the site. And that has received their building permit and grading permit application approval for that existing submission. The applicant is requesting a parking waiver in accordance with Town Code Section 191-44. Total number of required parking spaces is 483, and they're proposing 351 spaces. A memo from the Lenhart Traffic Consulting and parking waiver application are attached to the agenda. For criteria of approval and findings for stormwater management, they did get Step 2 approval. Water quality treatment through the use of 18 microbioprotection facilities. One submerged gravel wetland had been provided for greater than 100% of the total impervious area within the limits of disturbance. Additionally, post-development flows are either equal to or less than that of the pre-development condition. On the southeast property boundary, the tenure flow is being managed and reduced through an underground structural storage system. And the applicant has submitted the Step 3 final site stormwater plan for review and approval. For streets, the site, as I mentioned, will utilize two exit and entrances, one off of Rosewick Road at the signalized intersection and an interparcel connection to the southern boundary. The parking lot has been designed to provide adequate circulation throughout the site. And they are proposing five-foot sidewalks to connect to the overall network of the future center, allowing for ease and accessibility to the future development. Ramps have also been provided to the crosswalks to ensure that the sidewalks are in compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Under the forest conservation, the applicant submitted a final forest conservation plan, which was reviewed and approved by staff. The site had 11 acres of existing forest and were required to conserve 2.93 acres under the forest conservation regulations. The applicant has provided 0.66 and an easement on-site, 0.02 acres of reforestation on-site, and will be providing 13.10 acres at a two-to-one ratio of reforestation off-site within the Port Tobacco watershed. Staff has received the off-site forest conservation easement for recordation. Under water and sewer, the water and sewer connections are being provided in compliance with this section. Currently, there is water and sewer capacity estimated for this project, including the proposed 193 multifamily units. Under the commercial zoning regulations, they have the dwelling unit multifamily, as well as all other permissible uses, as noted in the chapter. The site development plan is in accordance with those dimensional requirements. The minimum frontage for the site is 100 feet, and the proposed site is approximately 740 feet along Rosewick Road. The site will have a 45-foot front yard setback along Rosewick, and no side yard setback and a rear setback of 25 feet. The maximum height will be set at 70 feet, and each building will be evaluated for compliance. Under lighting standards, the applicant has provided parking lot lighting in accordance with this section, as shown on Sheet 10 of the major site plan. Proposed lighting will not exceed 10-foot candles and will adequately illuminate the site during the evening hours. The site is surrounded by similar uses, and the lighting should not negatively affect the adjoining property owners. All of the lighting is aimed down and will not flicker in accordance with this section. Provided lighting design has a minimum of one foot candle as required by the code. The maximum light pole height is 25 feet, and all lights are of the same style. There are 14 proposed building lights and 16 total pole-mounted lights. The attached cylinder wall sconces attached to the buildings will have a set and finish, and the pole-mounted lights will be constructed of steel. Under parking requirements, and hopefully I have this one right, they have multifamily units requiring a total of 483 parking spaces. The existing uses were evaluated under the existing, the previous major site plan, the fuel sales, fast food restaurant, and grocery store and retail sales general. The total required parking for the entire shopping center is 627 parking spaces. They're providing 559 with 22 ADA parking spaces. And they did provide an update to the loading spaces. That's why I attached the updated site plan to the agenda. Let me see if I can, I'll pull that up at the end. But they did correct the numbers, which do not reflect the numbers that I have here in my chart. So once I'm done with this, I'll pull that up and show you the revised cover sheet. So as noted, that they are requesting a parking waiver in accordance with the Town Code. Lenhart Traffic Consulting Incorporated submitted a memo using the Parking Generation Manual by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or ITE. Using the ITE peak parking generation rates, and the apartment units would need a maximum of 265 parking spaces. Therefore, it has been determined that the proposed 351 parking spaces will meet the immediate need of the project. Staff would recommend approval of the parking waiver. And all of the standard and ADA parking spaces are being installed per the requirements of the code with appropriate access aisles, as shown on the site plan. The landscaping, the interior parking landscaping is assumed to be met on-site. The code requires that this area has a landscape area equivalent to 10% of the site, and the applicant has provided approximately 16% or 16,000 square feet. The applicant is proposing enough landscaping that comes into compliance with the requirements. The applicant, I have noted that they've provided some non-native vegetation. And I did send them some comments regarding that and stating that all of the landscaping should be native to the Chesapeake Bay watershed. I also asked that they update the landscaping schedule to ensure that the trees, shrubs, and any perennials are noted on the landscaping schedule, which those have, they did provide an update on the most recent revision that I uploaded. However, it still doesn't meet the, what I'm looking for is having all of the perennials listed with the actual planting types. The actual chart that they have on there does indicate that they are meeting the code requirement, but I do want to see that in the landscaping schedule and on the plans. They have noted that the perimeter landscaping requirement has been met in accordance with that section. And I'm hoping that I can get the updated planting list with all of the perennials added, as noted in my conditions. For the recreation and open space requirement, they are providing open space amenities for this project, including 25,243 square feet of open space recreation, including a pool, dog park, plaza, outdoor seating area, and clubhouse for the residents to utilize. In accordance with Chapter 173-11.B, the project was required to provide 15% open space for the project, which they have met. Under the 2020 comprehensive plan, as noted, this is in compliance with the land use element that labels the site as commercial. Under the transportation goals, they are proposing sidewalks throughout on-site to connect to the overall network of the center for ease and accessibility to all future development, including the Rosewick Crossing Shopping Center across the street, and better manage the supply of existing parking and limit new off-street parking. As noted, the applicant is providing 559 parking spaces to accommodate uses on-site. And there are no existing parking lots within 400 feet of the proposed sites. They will not be utilizing any shared parking or existing parking. Staff is recommending approval of the major site plan and the parking waiver in accordance with Chapter 191-11 of the Town Code with the following conditions. So all of the landscaping should be native to the Chesapeake Bay watershed. I did note that they have a crepe myrtle listed on the planting list, and I am recommending it be changed to a service berry, as one example. And my second condition is to expand the landscaping table to include all proposed trees, shrubs, and perennials, and to show the planting locations on the site plan. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have of me or of the applicant. But I will bring up the revised site plan that we received addressing some of the previous comments that I had prior to the Planning Commission. And I'm sorry for the delay. Almost there. Okay. So down, you can see at the bottom of the Sheet 1, they did add the loading spaces, which was not present on the previous site plan. So they do show the loading for retail sales, two is required. They're providing three. Fuel sales, one is required. They are providing one. The fast food restaurant requires one, and they are providing one. And the multifamily is required to have two, and they will be providing two. So that was an update to the previous site plan.
Director Harrington, I have a question about, you made this statement verbally and in your staff report on the transportation element on Page 5, 559 spaces. But earlier in the report, there was an original 483. Where's this 559 come from?
So as I noted, that the 483 is what would be required for the apartments only. It doesn't take into account the grocery store, retail, convenience store, or the fast food restaurant. So that is just the apartment calculations. So the 559 that's being provided is for the entire shopping center. And as I noted, the 483 is just the total required for... And as I noted, the 483 is just the total required for the apartments, and then they'll be providing 351 for the apartments in addition to the 208 provided for the commercial.
Thanks for that clarification. So, I go to the commissioners, any questions or comments of Director Harrington that the applicant might be able to address also.
Mike, this is John Mudd. First question is, I guess, for Janine. When did you get this revised site plan?
That was earlier this year. It's been a few months since I've had it. I'm not sure if I noted it in my staff report.
No, but you're indicating that this current version we're looking at now, which you added to the package today, was revised to meet your review comments? And the question is, when did you receive that latest revision?
Oh, this morning.
This morning, okay.
Yeah, I was going to take it with the conditions as they were, and they tried to address the comments that I had prior to planning.
Okay. All right. Well, I mean, I guess my first little bit of consternation is I'm not sure the commission should be considering this site plan, considering it was filed with you today, and I appreciate your hard work and diligence and doing reviews nonstop, but it feels like this is going too fast. The second bigger issue I have, and this is really for the good of the commission and whoever's listening, I'm very opposed to proposed parking waiver that was filed on behalf of this application. In my opinion, and based on my history, it is an extreme reduction in required parking, specifically for the apartments. To drop below two spaces per unit is, to me, unfathomable. Parking ratios for residential units doesn't require a PhD or years of study. It's the most common sense standard anyone could come up with, and the point is that if you have a residential unit, whether it's an apartment, a townhouse, or a home, you're going to need at least two parking spaces to accommodate that unit, and that's my problem here. In fact, the numbers show they're going to provide 316 spaces on-site with an additional 35 spaces, which are offsite shared spaces, which I can only assume are somewhere in one of the retail sites. To me, that's woefully insufficient, and that's not even considering having guest parking related to this facility. So, again, just for the record, I am opposed to the parking waiver as it is presently constructed. I looked at the site in great detail to try to figure out what is limiting or inhibiting the ability of this project to meet its parking standards. And I wish there was something apparent other than the fact that you have, in my opinion, too much building space in proportion to the site. You have too many units and not enough land area left over to support it with parking. You know, I understand the economics related to these sorts of projects, yet at the same time, I'm really opposed to approving a project that is going to demonstrate a severe deficiency in the future residents' ability to comfortably park at or near their residence. You know, that's something we have to look out for in the long term. So, that's my biggest concern. Honestly, I don't know how you fix the problem to achieve two spaces per unit. That would be adding an additional, you know, 35 or so spaces to the site to meet two spaces per unit, but there's no room left to do that. And that leads me to the unenviable point of view that you may need to reduce the total building square footage to accommodate the necessary parking. So, in two ways, I'm almost suggesting we make a deferral on this application tonight. First of all, I'm not sure we should be considering it, being that it was filed today with substantive changes, which I'm sure, you know, really haven't been reviewed in great detail. At the same time, I'm not in a position to feel good about this project in any way until we can at least see some effort on the part of the applicant to try to provide a better ratio of parking required. I mean, I appreciate the International Engineer Society and their documentation, and Lord knows I love traffic engineers. Some of my best friends are traffic engineers. But in terms of parking standards, I would lay on the side of both American Planning Association and the Urban Land Institute as two nationwide recognized sources that the town or whoever could utilize to come to grips with what are more realistic potentially parking standards that should be used. I'm not sure the ITE is the go-to document for parking generation. And with that said, that's really where I sit at this point, Mr. Chairman, and would be happy to hear any other comments from commission members.
Commissioner, thanks. You have a question or comment?
I do have a comment, and I want to thank Commissioner Mudd for raising his concern about the apartment parking. I was sitting here trying to physically imagine what does 1.82 parking spaces look like. And so, I co-sign with his concern about the limited parking for the apartments.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward, you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. And I think we should really give the applicant a chance to respond to that. I would really love to hear what they have to say. But before I do that, my only question is for Janine. I think this project was included in Director Stahl's water allocation. That would be my only concern right now. If you can confirm that, that would be great.
Yes, that has been accounted for in our calculations, and they are currently providing upgrades to systems nearby to ensure adequate water and sewer capacity. So, that is not an issue at all for the town at this point.
Thank you so much. That was my only concern, and I would really love to hear from the applicant.
Yeah, and that was my intention. I wanted to gather the questions and comments so that the applicant could hear all of them in context. So, here's a great opportunity now for the applicant to make their case.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Matthew Tedesco. I'm local land use counsel for the applicant here on behalf of Rosewood Corner Venture LLC, represented this evening by Mr. Rick Bailey, as well as Rosewood Apartments LLC, represented this evening by Mr. Kevin Carney and Dave Lakin. Also with us from Barrett and Associates is Anthony Ollickson and Terry Wright. And we have our expert land traffic engineer, Mike Lenhart, from Lenhart Traffic Consulting with us this evening. First and foremost, your indulgence, I just want to thank Ms. Harrington for her review of this application. We obviously are in agreement with her recommendations. We do agree with the recommended conditions of approval. Before I get too ahead of myself, I, we would respectfully request that this case actually be heard this evening and be supported consistently with your, with your staff report. I want to just give a little bit of history. As Ms. Harrington indicated, this site plan is actually, this application tonight before you was actually revision to a major site plan that you all approved back in February of this year, February 2, 2021. That site plan included the 19,000-square-foot Aldi, a 7,000-square-foot retail building, a 5,000-square-foot gas station with eight multiproduct dispensers, and 11,000-square-foot daycare, two office buildings totaling 40,000 square feet, a bank at 3,200 square feet, and a restaurant at 3,400 square feet and some change. The revision seeks to remove the daycare, both office buildings and the bank. As originally proposed, the applicant envisioned the relocation of a medical office building from Prince George's County to La Plata, and as well as locating a county library. However, both of those users either elected to stay in their current locations or chose other sites, which caused the applicant to explore other uses on the property. Adding residential multifamily to this development site, which is a permitted use in the CH zone, will create a mixed-use environment that facilitates smart growth while responding to market demands, ensures a 24th, 21st century development that creates a walkable and pedestrian-friendly environment by placing residential development adjacent to commercial retail development. In this case, the residence will be close to grocery stores, restaurants, and other service retail uses. Turning to Commissioner Mudd's comments with respect to the parking, that seems to be, well, let me say this first. First and foremost, I do want to highlight that the plan that was sent to Ms. Harrington this morning was not a substantive change to the plan that was sent back before Thanksgiving, if not sooner, if not prior to that. The only changes to the site plan that were made to the, from the plan that was submitted this morning were what Ms. Harrington referenced with respect to that table regarding the loading spaces, and there were some minor non-substantive changes to the landscaping that were purposefully intended to try to address Ms. Harrington's conditions in advance of the hearing. So, we do not believe that there is a basis to, to continue this hearing for that reason. These plans are substantially consistent and similar to what has, has been submitted and thoroughly reviewed by your staff. Turning to the parking waiver, and Mr. Carney's on the line as well as Mr. Lenhart, I will turn to them momentarily, but I do, with all due respect to Commissioner Mudd, do want to take exception to the notion that ULI or some other agency would be the preeminent resource for determining parking manual. I will say, as a practitioner, not only in your great jurisdiction, but in Charles County as well as Prince George's County, the ITE Parking Generation Manual, 5th Edition, is the preeminent go-to manual as it relates to parking. We have provided that memo by Mr. Lenhart. I will call him in a second for him to speak in greater detail about it, but we, that, that manual specifically looks at study areas and comes up with a determination and a ratio of peak hour parking demand. And what we often find and what we see is that what actually is required to meet the demand is not consistent with what zoning ordinances otherwise require. We've seen that in many jurisdictions, La Plata not excluded, in which we see a much higher parking ratio requirement than actually what peak hour demands would, would require. Moreover, as Mr. Carney will testify to or provides to you, as, as a, as a developer of apartment buildings along the East Coast, they cannot provide insufficient parking and expect to lease out their, their residential units. There has been great effort in not only designing this site, but also determining the appropriate ratio of parking given what's proposed from the residential unit perspective. And I will say, and I'm going to turn to Mr. Lenhart now to further respond to the parking comment, but just in, in my experience as a practitioner in multiple jurisdictions, we often see in other bodies, including the Prince George's County Planning Board and other councils and other municipalities, we see parking supported by the ITE, relied upon by the ITE, and justified by other jurisdictions to and include what's provided before you this evening. For an example, a project in Brandywine, which I would contend is, you know, geographically and consistent with, and close to Charles County, we had a 312 multifamily apartment building that was served by 569 spaces, which equated to 1.82 parking ratio per unit, 1.82. That's precisely what is proposed here, totally consistent with that and found to be acceptable. With that, I appreciate your indulgence, but I'm going to turn to Mr. Lenhart, who is an expert in the field of traffic engineering, who prepared the memorandum, who has studied the ITE, and he can speak more eloquently to it than I, and I would, I would ask him to, to queue up, please.
Yes, thanks, Matt. Good evening. For the record, Michael Lenhart with Lenhart Traffic Consulting. And so, I, with respect to Mr. Mudd's comments about the ITE manual, I'd like to take a few moments and discuss briefly what, what our findings were and what is in the ITE manual. So, the Institute for Transportation Engineers has a parking generation manual. It is a national publication accepted by all jurisdictions that we have worked with and jurisdictions across the country. The land use code for, for this project, multifamily mid-rise housing, ITE looked at parking supply ratios that were provided at sites, and at 62 study sites that they looked at, the average parking supply was 1.7 spaces per unit and one space per bed. Now, that's, that's the supply, that's not the demand. They undertook actual peak parking demand studies at 73 similar sites to this, and the peak parking demand at those 73 sites averaged at 1.31 spaces per unit and 0.75 spaces per bed. What they found is what you would expect, that peak parking demand occurs at night from 11:00 or 12:00 o'clock at night until about 4:00 or 5:00 a.m., and that's when the peak is 100% peak parking. And then, beginning at 5:00 a.m., 6% of the site, the vehicles leave the site at 5:00 a.m. By 6:00 a.m., 17% of the vehicles are gone. By 7:00 a.m., 29% are gone, and it does not, it doesn't go above that point. It goes down by noon, it's roughly 50% of the vehicles are offsite, and then slowly goes back up again until 9:00 o'clock, 83% of the vehicles are onsite, and 11:00, 93, and then a peak parking from 12:00 to 4:00. And so, there are, these are typical suburban sites, not near transit, and, you know, very similar in nature. And as Mr. Tedesco indicated, we also worked on the project in Brandywine that provided the supply of 1.82 per unit. We've worked on many similar variance requests of departures from loading standards in Prince George's County in particular, just to the north, and this proposed parking ratio is actually on the high end of what we've seen approved in many places. 1.5, 1.6 spaces per unit has been approved in numerous places throughout Prince George's County. And again, the ITE indicates that the peak parking demand would average at 1.31 per unit. We do have some additional spaces that are provided for overflow, and that's the 35 spaces that Mr. Mudd indicated. We have 13, 316 dedicated on-site, 35 overflow offsite, and again, because the peak occurs in the middle of the night, none of the residential, I'm sorry, none of the retail or commercial uses on the balance of the site will have basically any demand at that time. So, this sets up for a perfect shared parking scenario. Furthermore, parking is, you know, providing the right amount of parking is really looking to provide a balance. Certainly, we don't want to have too little parking and people can't find available parking. But we also, you know, with environmental impacts, stormwater management, it's important not to provide too much parking either, and two, two spaces per unit is overly conservative plus the additional guest space per two. plus the additional guest space per two units. It would over-provide the parking at this location.
And Mike, if I may just jump in again, this is Matt. So that's going to be half the applicant. While Mike was talking, I did happen to find a study for the Urban Land Institute by Barton and Ashman Associates, together with data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And it provides different ranges based upon the dwelling units. And it says for multifamily dwelling units with one or two bedrooms, they recommend a 1.5 down to a 1.0 for multifamily for efficiency. Two spaces for multifamily for three or more bedrooms. We have a total of, out of 193 units, we only have 22 three-bedrooms. The vast majority of this project are made up of one and two bedrooms, further supporting the 1.82 that's proposed and seems to be consistent with a Barton-Ashman associate study that was done for the Urban Land Institute that also took into the Institute of Transportation Engineers. With that, Mr. Chairman, I do want to turn to Mr. Kevin Carney, who has actual practical, real-world experience of developing multifamily projects and delivering those from not only meeting the needs of the residents, from amenities and improvements concerns, but also from a parking perspective.
Commissioners, thank you. My partners and I have done many multifamily jobs, and the parking ratio for this job is exactly what we've done in other communities. And what we find more often than not is, there are people that have three cars, but more often than not, there is a single person in a two-bedroom that has one car. And even though the majority of the bedrooms, and this is two bedrooms, we have a lot of one-bedrooms because that's what we think where the marketplace will be. The mix of parking and amenities is consistent with the competition in the area. And we're very, very comfortable with the ratio, knowing that our customers will not suffer. We're very happy with the plan. We're excited about the plan, quite honestly. And we think it will be very successful, and none of the tenants will be worried about parking.
Any other input?
No, I just, again, one of the convenient things of doing these virtually is that we have access to other screens on our computers, and, you know, we've been doing some searching and sharing some information internally in response to Commissioner Mudd's comments, which we understand the perception. But the studies and the reports, not only from what the I T E, which is the go-to resource for this topic and this issue, accepted and adopted by numerous jurisdictions, not only locally but nationally, support what is proposed this evening and further supported by your staff. And we would hope that the commission would rely upon not what we're saying, but actually what a national I T E that has taken into 62 different study areas and is relied upon as the resource for such analysis, that we are more than meeting what our peak demand will be and that the perception of a parking issue is just that, it's just that, a perception. And I would just finally note that, you know, more parking means more asphalt, which means less green area, less landscaping area, more stormwater runoff that has to be treated. So, you know, there is something to be said for reducing the amount of impervious area to and include, you know, the whole notion of 21st century development by providing mixed uses. And one of the reasons why the zoning ordinance was amended to include multifamily in the CH zone was to have people living in close proximity to retail, to avoid the need to travel and drive and have cars. We have a significant pedestrian network system that's been previously approved with this application. All the sidewalks that are proposed with this revision for the multifamily tie into the sidewalks that connect to the grocery store, as well as connect to points to the north. So as Mr. Carney indicated, you know, we are very confident that this is not underparked. It is more than sufficiently parked. And in support of that, Mr. Lenhart's expert analysis and testimony is supported by the I T E. We would hope that you would find acceptable and supportable this evening.
This is Dave Lakin. This is, oh, sorry. This is Dave Lakin, partners with Kevin Carney. I just want to stress that we have done numerous complexes up till now. This is the ratio we usually use. And actually, it's not always the number of parking spots. It's how they're laid out. That is a major problem. A lot of places, they'll put a lot of parking in, but they'll put it remotely, which people don't use to start with or don't even want. We spent a lot of time on this project, and if you notice, the spaces are fairly equally spread out around the buildings. So we don't have a, I'm going to say a hotspot where numerous people need to park, and then a cold spot where there's plenty of spaces, but nobody wants to walk out to them. So I just want to add, it's not always just the numbers. It's how they're put out here to make them convenient for all the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other input from the applicant?
Just one final closing comment on the parking waiver. You know, we are hopeful that with not only the information that's in your staff, in the staff report, but provided in the backup from Mr. Lenhart's memo, but the testimony in which you've heard this evening, you know, really shows and supports the empirical over the anecdotal. So with that, you know, we think this is a wonderfully wonderful project in addition to the La Plata area as provided for in your backup, you know, the amenities, the architect. Although this body is not here to approve the architecture, the architecture is very well-done. It will be a tremendously good asset to the town, and we would hopefully respectfully request your support.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman John Mudd, one more quick question. The 35 off-site shared spaces you're going to provide, can you indicate where those would be located? I mean, are they going to be at the gas station or the fast food or?
Did Anthony or Rick want to, or Kevin want to take that?
It's kind of a combination, but there's the, to the, the way I can describe it is as you're looking at the plan, you can see north, I'll call that directly north, there's some spaces. But also, if you look over to the, further to the left, next to the Audi, you'll see the section of 7,000 square feet, that's plenty of parking there, just exactly where that area just pointed.
And what's the building to the north propose to be?
That is the restaurant pad.
All right.
And I would say, Commissioner Mudd, and I thank you for the question. I would say even excluding the 35 shared, we still, again, we're relying upon the I T E. I respect your questioning of that manual and that study. But even with the 35 shared, we still exceed, or excluding those, we still exceed the peak hour demand that the I T E Generation Manual anticipates for this type of use at this type of location.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward, you have a question or comment?
I do, and thank you, Mr. Tedesco, for your thorough explanation and all of you for weighing in on this conversation. And thank you for reminding us that we're not here to, you know, vote on the architecture, and neither are we to vote on our opinions. If this, the waiver, the parking waiver is found exceptional in our Section 191, Section 11 of the town code, then I don't see how we could have an objection unless the town code is not accurate. And I don't want to make that assumption. So assuming that our town code is accurate and allows for the waiver, I don't see a problem with this. And for one thing, one time tonight, I'm not concerned about the traffic. Where you're putting this is in a good place. So thank you.
If I could respond, ironically enough, we did do a traffic studies, where we had that answer.
I know, but we didn't get it, but I wasn't concerned about the traffic based upon the location of this particular project. So thank you so much for that.
Yeah, and if I could just buttress something the council member said. The standard is we need to demonstrate that the fewer spaces will adequately serve the use and will not adversely affect the site or adjacent area. You know, if you look at the adjacent area, it's commercial in nature. And I don't see how what's proposed here has any adverse effect whatsoever on anything in the surrounding area. And I feel, you know, the proponents of the evidence, or substantial evidence that we've put forward, adequately shows that what is proposed will adequately serve this particular use. So not to get legally on it, but that's the legal standard, and I feel, you know, there is substantial evidence in the record to support that.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Okay, so I'll remind you.
Has her hand up.
Oh, I didn't miss that. Go ahead, Director Harrington.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that when we redid our zoning code and when we did our 2020 comprehensive plan update, we looked at parking, we looked at the amount of asphalt that the town currently has. And that is why I noted in my staff report that under our goals for transportation, we're not looking to add more parking than is deemed necessary. And so when we get a submission like this, we are looking at the engineers that are providing the background research that are doing this. I'm not an engineer. I am taking what they have provided to me, and I'm looking at it from the logical standpoint of are they making the basis for their parking calculations? That is why I am doing a staff report. That's why we, staff is reviewing these plans prior to these meetings. And we are using the knowledge that the applicant has and their consultants to come to a determination. So using our comprehensive plan, our zoning code, and the evidence provided by the applicant, staff is finding that they have provided reasonable justification and that they, you know, have done their due diligence on that. And that's all I'll say.
Okay, so having heard that, that's a great segue into what staff is recommending. Staff is recommending approval of the major site plan and waiver from the parking requirements with conditions. And those conditions are, all the landscaping should be native to the Chesapeake Bay watershed and expand the landscaping schedule to include proposed trees, shrubs, and perennials, and show the planning locations on the site plan. So having heard the recommendation from the staff, I look to the commissioners for a motion.
Chairman Gann, I'd like to move that, to approve the major site plan and parking waiver with the conditions noted in the staff report.
We have a motion. Is there a second? I will second that emotion, that motion, I should say. And I'll go to a vote, unless there's any further discussion first. Not hearing any. Commissioner Banks, vote yes or no?
I vote yea.
Commissioner Councilman Bryant Ward, yes or no?
Yea.
Commissioner Johnson, yes or no?
I'll pass.
I'm sorry, can you hear that?
Well, obviously I can't. I'll say, yeah, yea.
Okay, Commissioner Mudd?
No.
And I am voting yea. So again, like before, we have a four to one vote, and the motion carries. To the members of the applicant team, thank you very much for your presence and presentation this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is Dorchester Community Center. Janine, your staff report, please.
Sorry about that. I'm trying to share my screen as well. There we go. Okay, so this coming before you is a zoning map error for the Dorchester Community Center. It is not a mistake as some of the others that I brought before you are. It's just something that we've noted with receiving plans for the Dorchester Community Center that the town has been working very hard on. So in November of 2021, staff was contacted about the zoning verification of Parcel 65, located along Dorchester Avenue. On the 2021 official zoning map, the parcel is zoned industrial high. It was zoned public lands on the 2011 zoning map, and it is owned by the Town of La Plata and currently being utilized for the Dorchester Community Center. We changed the zoning to industrial high in 2018 as part of the comprehensive zoning code update. And this zoning category was chosen because it was owned and operated by the town and had existing industrial uses on it. What was not known at the time is that this property was chosen for the Dorchester Community Center. It will be comprised of several uses, including a cultural institution, conference center, community garden, and a minor indoor recreational facility. These uses cannot be fully realized within the industrial high zoning category, and therefore, staff is recommending that the property is rezoned to central business. The property is shown as industrial on the comprehensive land use map, so it would need revision to our land use map as we've done in the past. There is basis to rezone the property to CB, since the properties to the west and the south are also zoned central business or commercial. Under the 2020 comprehensive plan, we had outlined two goals for the need for this community center under our municipal and community services and facilities goals and actions to promote a culture of civic activism and community ownership. The town should continue to invest in community activities that bring residents together and create strong civic bonds. This Dorchester Community Center has shown to be a huge asset to the communities in the area that are underserved and are in need of some civic activities and community activities for their children. And under our recreation and parks goals and actions, meet identified facilities' needs, especially for indoor recreation and sports fitness, et cetera. So after reviewing the 2011 Parks and Recreation Master Plan, prioritize the types of indoor facilities needed in the Town of La Plata, including basketball, sports fitness, et cetera. And the proposed indoor recreational center on the site, we did receive grant funding to complete that project. And with the industrial high zoning, that does put us in a difficult situation as we wouldn't really be able to complete those updates. So staff is recommending the planning commission review the proposed zoning map change and provide comments and/or recommendation to proceed to the town council. And then I will bring up the map comparison. So as you can see, I guess it's not going to go up much more than that. As you can see on the 2011 zoning map, it was zoned public land since it's owned by the Town of La Plata. And we have central business to the west and then CBT to the south. So in 2018, we did change that to industrial high because it was owned by the town and has the water tower, and we were using it for storage for our public works and police. And now we were looking to reuse the site for the community, Dorchester Community Center. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Director Harrington, I have a question. And you just touched on it with the water tower. The water tower is in the northern portion of this property. So if I understand your proposal correctly, the entire property would be changed to CB. When I looked at the code, I couldn't see any verbiage about whether or not a water tower could be in the CB zone. Do you have any comments, woman?
So water tower is, there is, I'd have to look up the zoning code. We have a category for, in case anyone was wondering, it's still not updated on our municipal code. So if you go to the town website and you click on forms and applications, you'll see our zoning ordinance effective October 13. applications, you'll see our zoning ordinance effective October 13, 2020. So if anyone's looking for the most recent, it's right there.
Oh, that's clarification, because I was using the MUNI code.
Yes, so the MUNI code is not unfortunately is not updated at this time. So we have public utility installations. It's permitted in all zones.
Okay, that that answers my question. Any other questions or comments from commission members? Not hearing any. The staff is proposing that we approve this zoning change. Do I hear a motion from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, this is John Mudd. I would make a recommendation that the planning commission approve the proposed correction to the zoning map and forward the application to the town council for further action.
That's the motion. Is there a second?
Chairman Gann, I second the motion.
Thank you. The motion has been properly made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay, we'll go to a vote. Commissioner Banks, yes or no?
Yes, absolutely.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward, yes or no?
Yes.
Councilwoman, I mean, Commissioner Johnson, yes or no?
Yes.
Commissioner Mudd, yes or no?
Yes.
And I also say yes. Five to zero. The motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Director Harrington, the next item is the planning commission meeting schedule. Is there anything you want to say about it before we talk about it?
No, it's pretty standard. I believe I've gone through and double checked. Hopefully you guys have checked as well, but I don't think anything falls on a holiday. But if there is a date, I know generally August is National Night Out, so that may be an issue that we have to look at.
Well, I was actually going to raise that question. Do we not know when National Night Out is scheduled? Because it seems like we run into that issue every year.
Yeah, I believe that it is scheduled for the the first Tuesday in August, so we may want to be proactive and take a look at that date.
And I recommend we do that. Can we move it to the second Tuesday?
If that is the everyone's available. Well, no, that's the that may be town council. I forgot they moved their town council meetings to the second, third, and fourth Tuesday of the month.
So could I ask staff to look into this to see if there would be an appropriate alternate date to avoid this annual conflict with National Night Out?
What we've generally done, I think, in the past is looked at the Wednesday following.
And if I look at my calendar.
So if that's something that works for everyone, we may want to look at changing that permanently for August. So that'll be Wednesday, August 3.
I'm okay with that. How about the other commissioners?
I'm okay with it.
Good with me.
I'm okay as well.
Okay, it sounds like let's go ahead and move the August meeting routinely to the first Wednesday because of National Night Out. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Do we need to vote on that? I don't think we do.
I don't think you do either. It's more just updating the the meeting schedule. And then, you know, as we go through, there are going to be some days that may not work for everyone. And it's something that we just try to get the standard schedule down for applicants, knowing when the they need to submit for the meeting.
So another comment that I have is it's been a while since we've had an election. We currently don't have a vice chair since the councilwoman has become a councilperson. And I'm wondering if we ought to put on our calendar elections of, you know, chair and vice chair. And one of the reasons I bring that up is the April meeting, I know I will not be here. I will be out of town. My wife and I celebrated a significant wedding anniversary this year, and the family is taking us to Ireland. So I will not do a planning commission from Ireland. In June, it falls on my birthday, and my family would probably prefer me not to be involved in a planning commission meeting that night. But I don't want my my absence to prevent the commission meeting from occurring.
Absolutely. We can schedule that for the January meeting.
Okay. Other questions or comments on the planning commission proposed meeting schedule from the commissioners? Not hearing any. We can move on to the next item on the agenda, the planning department update. Janine?
All right, thank you. So for planning department updates, we have some upcoming projects for the planning commission review, including the town homes of Potomac Square, which is a major subdivision. That property was annexed into the town, and they are looking at doing 27 townhomes off of Scroggen Street. We also have Magnolia Gardens, which is a major site plan for 72 apartment units. And we will also be getting in Heritage Green, parcel O, with 66 units, single-family dwellings, and parcel A, which is 265, if I'm remembering correctly, single-family dwellings, as part of the overall Heritage Green development. So those will be forthcoming. For development review of the past month, we've had 16 submissions, six design review board, four forest conservation, one major site plan, two minor site plans, one major subdivision, and one stormwater management submission. And we've had eight resubmissions in that time period for re-reviews. We have not held any pre-construction meetings in the past month. For matters of information, staff is working on a development guide or development review manual, which is almost completed, and we'll be sending that to our public information officer for formatting and editing before we put that out to the public. That will be a document that goes from the very beginning stages of annexation all the way down through occupancy permit. And it is a step-by-step guide for applicants on how to do submissions, who is the approving authority, the timeframes, as well as guides for stormwater management as built submissions. Pretty much anything to do with development in the town will be in this manual. And that is one of the things that I've been working on. We are also doing an urban tree canopy study. We are partnering with Alliance for the Bay to coordinate that study. They have chosen a contractor, DRG, to actually do the study for us and find areas where we can promote trees or tree canopies in the town. We're currently reviewing and revising the designer review board process. We're trying to make it a little bit more flexible and easier on the applicants. So we're we're coming up with a staff approval process for anything that's very minor in nature. And then, of course, leaving new construction, larger developments for the designer review board, as well as common sign plans for their review and approval. We are working on a pedestrian bikeway that leads from radio station, Rosebrook Road. It goes down Radio Station Road, and will go through the the downtown. We are proceeding with that design that will be incorporated into the entrance for Heritage Green Parkway along Charles Street, Willow Lane. So we are contracting with Mead and Hunt to perform that design work. And then I'm also working on a lot of draft code revisions. We're working on chapter 16, as I mentioned, for design review board. This will be going to the town council on December 21, updating chapter 117 for health and sanitation. As you may or may not know, we are a bird city, and we are a tree city. So when looking at some of our codes, we noticed that it wasn't in line with our goals and policies for our Keep La Plata Beautiful and our green team, as we're calling them. Also looking at chapter 170 for streets and sidewalks, we are adopting Charles County standard details so that way our roads and water and sewer connections line up with the county when we interconnect. I'm also looking at the subdivision chapter, which is in progress. We've noticed that that hasn't been updated in a very long time, and there are some outdated items that need to be reviewed. And this will be coming to the planning commission as part of your review process, along with the streets and sidewalks, again, waters and sewers, to look at the adopting the Charles County standards or standard details, working on the sign code. The first draft of that has been completed, really looking to remove any content-based regulations due to some of the past lawsuits. We know that we cannot judge a sign by content. We really have to look at location, size, and a few other regulations that we can enforce. As Mr. Mudd had mentioned earlier, we do not currently have an adequate public facilities ordinance. So that is one thing that I've been tasked with drafting. And I've been looking to the Charles County Code, as well as other jurisdictions within Maryland, for examples on adequate public facilities to look at school seats, roads, as well as water and sewer and capacity. And then finally, I will be bringing forward a presentation for the planning commission to show you what I mean by form-based code. As part of our comprehensive plan, we did note that we should create a zone for the downtown core or our downtown redevelopment area to ensure the most flexible zoning criteria that we can do to enhance and promote development in that area and redevelopment in that area. So form-based code is not what people are used to. It doesn't have your typical, you know, R21, you can have single-family dwellings, commercial highway, you can have this. It is a flexible zone that pretty much any use is permitted in within reason. Obviously, there's a few that wouldn't exactly apply. But it's really looking at height setbacks and other dimensional standards to allow for flexibility in that area. So I'm currently working on doing research. I have counsel that is assisting me with that in order to fulfill that goal of the comprehensive plan and allow us to redevelop our downtown core that we've been trying to do for many, many years. So that's my, those are my updates. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question. And I guess this is for the benefit of our newest members. Can you, on page four, you talked about eight resubmissions. Can you give us an example of a resubmission and why it might be a resubmission? Sounds efficient.
Yes. So when we receive a submission for any project, example, a site plan, when the applicant submits, that is distributed to our technical review team, which includes a couple outside agencies at this point to assist the town in reviews. So we have the Soil Conservation District performing our stormwater management reviews, and we are contracting with McCrone Incorporated to perform our water and sewer reviews. So it is distributed to internal staff as well as any external staff for review. We have generally have a 30-day review period for new submissions. After that 30 days, we would send back any comments or questions that we have on the plans for the applicant to revise, and then they would resubmit. So when they resubmit, that is a resubmission. And then we typically have 15 days on the re-review to send back any comments and or approval to proceed to the next step.
Thank you. That was a very clear description. Any other questions or comments for Director Harrington on the planning department report?
Chairman Gann, this is Councilwoman Bryant Ward. Director Harrington, can you explain the rationale for the form-based code for downtown revitalization redevelopment, I'm sorry? What's the rationale for that?
Absolutely. So the downtown core, and actually, let me bring up my map here that might give you a better better view of what I'm talking about. Okay. So when I talk about the downtown core, I am talking about this section right here. It's bounded by Washington Avenue. It will be bounded by Talbot Street Extended and then North Maple Avenue down to Charles Street. So it's this area right here. It is under our Sustainable Communities overlay, which is done through the state. And this area has been on or in our plans back since the 2000 downtown redevelopment plan to really enhance this area and bring it to life. Currently, we have a lot of existing industrial uses, including the Coca-Cola plant and the Southern Maryland oil property, which takes up the vast majority of this, and it's taking up useful space in our downtown area. The town has been working on trying to figure out how to revitalize this area for quite a while. We had a Urban Land Institute study done in 2016 as to what we could do to improve the area. And we also took a look at this as part of our 2020 comprehensive plan update. So in order to proceed forward with redevelopment in this area, the CB zoning category, which is currently what is placed on on those properties, as you can see here, it does limit the uses. It does limit setbacks. It has quite a few development regulations that would not allow this to be done as the the best and highest use that it could be. Per the 2016 ULI study, there's a lot of concepts that were proposed that are not permitted under our central business zone. So the idea is to create a form-based code or a form-based zoning category just for this area in the downtown as a trial. There's a lot of places that are going to form-based code overall. You know, they're getting rid of their traditional zoning categories, as it were, and going to a form-based code that allows flexibility with certain regulations to limit height, you know, certain certain things on the site. So there's a lot of research that needs to be done on this. There is a lot of information that you can find on the, I know Urban Land Institute has quite a bit. Another one is Planetison. And again, I'll be bringing forward a presentation to really explain what a form-based code is, what our goal is for the downtown area, and how this form-based code will allow us to redevelop the way that we would like to, based on our previous plans.
Thank you so much.
Other questions or comments for Janine? Okay, Janine, thank you very much for that presentation. Councilwoman Bryant Ward, about an update on the town council?
Um, so November was a really great month. Just want to talk about some of the things that we passed, the zoning text amendment for the hospital campus zone. Shop La Plata Small was amazing. If you didn't get to come out, definitely try and come out next year. Old Town Time Gathering, thank you, Mr. Sampson. I did see you and your family for coming out. It was a beautiful night. The Christmas tree lighting was a great, great event. Just beautiful. Our town staff did an amazing job. And that's it. Everything else is coming before you.
All right. Well, thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Bryant Ward? Okay, is there any other business for the good of the commission to cover this evening?
So this
Just going to say, go ahead, Don.
I apologize. I just had a quick question about the revitalization and redevelopment. Is there, and this may be a premature question, is there a timeline for that?
Oops, and I did the wrong thing. There isn't necessarily a timeline, but what I will say, and I'll share my screen again, if you're interested in looking at some of the past plans or some of the past information that we have on what we're looking to do, if you go to the town's website, and you go click, go up here to the town government tab, and you go down to departments, you come over to planning, you'll see down towards the bottom, there's a tab for town plans. This will bring you to our comprehensive plan, our comprehensive recreation and parks master plan, transportation study. And then you'll also see the vision plan for Greater La Plata, which was done in March of 2000, and the plan for the future downtown La Plata, which was done in 2002, as well as some information on the ULI Urban Land as well as some information on the ULI Urban Land Institute study that we had in 2016. So again, these are really great resources to kind of see, as, as you can tell. I mean, this has been going on since 2000 that we've been wanting to do these types of updates. And for one reason or another, it's just never happened. The big goal right now, or the biggest challenge, I will say, is to find other locations for the large industrial sites that are currently occupying those spaces. And that's not an easy transition, and that's not something that can happen overnight. So this is definitely a longer-term goal. But I think at this point, the council will agree that we really want to start making strides to make some of this happen.
Excellent, thank you. I look forward to perusing the site.
Okay, anything else to bring up?
No. Director Harrington, you did very well for being, for not feeling well. You did phenomenal.
Absolutely. And that's a great segue. I want to thank all the members this evening. This was a particularly long meeting, very detailed. And I'm particularly thankful to our newest members for their active participation in this. So with that, I'd like to wish everyone the best of the holidays and Happy New Year and declare this meeting adjourned as of 8/11. So everyone have a good one. Take care.
Thank you. Great evening to everyone.
Good evening.
See you next year.
Have a good evening.